Metropolitan District Meeting. We are starting at three thirty-three. And Kristen, would you be kind and do the roll call for us by any chance?
Sure.
Thank you.
Alright, Director Larry Fox.
Here.
Director Mike Graham.
Here.
Treasurer Ralph Jacobson.
Here.
Secretary Michael Berzati.
Here.
Chairman Shami Shlomo.
I'm here. Alright, thank you so much.
No problem.
Looks like we gotta approve the agenda. I looked at it already. If someone wants to make a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
Thank you, Berzati. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That will be five to zero. And we are moving along. And we have the May twenty-second regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion, reapprove the minutes as written for May twenty-second.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that was five to zero. Reports, I think James was here. I wasn't sure if I saw one, but give me one second. Juan is here too, so either or, whoever would like to take this.
Yeah. So. Does anyone have any questions, concerns regarding the revenue reports for the month?
I do, I have a concern about this Smishni, I'm not sure why we're going down twenty-five percent. Do you have any idea what's going on?
Um, I know that lot does not see as much usage. Primarily during the weekdays, so that may be part of it, but. Um, it is getting less usage overall.
Okay. Uh, anyone else have questions for? James?
That's my question. It's kind of glaringly down, I mean, is how i- is that reflective of of the other parking lots in town? Uh, James, of the city parking lots?
Um, I mean, it's, we haven't sold as many permits down in that lot.
Not the permit, I'm not concerned about the permits, I'm concerned with parking.
That is part of it, so, um, but as a result. That lot is seeing just less usage overall, so all of our. Efforts have been directing people down to. Uh, the Hyawatha Lot and the four hundred block of Manitou Avenue. That's, that's where all of our, our communications are sending people to park. And as we've done that for, for as long as we have, it's. It's pulling people away from some of those other areas. Um, Rainbow Falls is probably another. A limiting factor, it has been closed, I know Smishni was getting a lot of usage for that purpose.
That's coming back, right, James?
Yeah, so that's gonna reopen Friday, so more likely we'll see a spike. As, as that gets more popular. They are going to be more or less marketing the parking lot that is up on Higginbotham. For use for specifically Rainbow Falls, but depending on how busy it is. Uh, we'll likely see. Folks still parking in that lot and making their way over to Serpentine for that purchase.
In other words, when you say the Higginbotham Lot and the four hundred Manitou Avenue Parking Lot. In other words, you're steering people further away from town to park rather than in town. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, so we are incentivizing those parking areas. On the eastern portions of Manitou, uh, just because there's a lot of underutilized. Parking that's over there that we do want people to use, and it's also in closer proximity to the shuttles. They get people up to the incline and the cog railway. Um, and then of course, we're using our trams to get people moving around that, that area as well.
James, where is it being advertised, by the way?
Um, so, pretty much. Our website lists those locations. And the pricing is also lowered in those areas as well compared to most of the other areas in town. The cog railway, um, and they sell their tickets, I believe they are advertising the Hyawatha Lot. A- as well. And a lot of the communications that comes from, from our department and our staff. Is, is recommending those areas for parking as well.
Okay, thank you for that. I noticed the town is also down in multiple, like Canyon. And other places. I can explain that, or I guess you don't have to, but. I'm just wondering, is somebody looking at it and?
Um, I mean, it's, it really is part of, of. More or less trying to. In- incentivize parking through pricing. Um, but overall, we've just been less busy. Uh, this year so far than previous years, so that could be. Uh, that could be economic factors leading to that, or maybe less people out spending money. Uh, it could be a number of reasons, but there's nothing that I can point to specifically that would cause. Uh, I notice a whole decrease in, in parkers, so. Um, I know we've also been marketing alternative forms of transportation, e-bike usage, tight ride. Um, so it's possible that that's having an impact as well. But if we, we are having a reduced amount of parkers. Could just be a result of some other efforts that we are.
Hey, is the city considering, maybe. We, you know, we went too high on price and you, we're deterring people from coming over here, or is that not an option?
Yeah, yeah, when we, when we looked at the rates of, for the. We did lower them during the week, uh, and we did, we did increase it on the weekend, but during the week, we did incre- decrease the rates, and then. On the economy area, we had it at five dollars, we lowered it down to three to see if that could make a difference as well.
I thought I saw two fifty.
Two fifty, yeah, so we lowered it from five to, I believe it was three fifty, now down to two fifty, is what we have it at now.
Okay, I appreciate it.
I've got something to say. Yeah, I mean, we're talking about how maybe people don't have as much money to expend, et cetera, but. Uh, look at the Wichita Lot, the Wichita Lot's up twenty-six percent. So that doesn't explain why the high, the why our Wichita, if Wichita's up twenty-six percent. That doesn't explain why Smishni's down twenty-eight percent, except maybe James explained that in that. Maybe the city's turning people away, or you know, moving them somewhere else. But one of my questions is, you know, I drive over to Manitou and look at this sign. You know, that's down by the Shriver Park. And it says all the parking lots are full. And then I get down to the Chamber Commerce Building, and from Chamber Commerce up to Chase Bank. There's forty or fifty empty parking places. Well, if some families come into Manitou and they see where every single parking lot is full. What are they gonna do? They're gonna turn around at Shriver Park and go to Old Colorado City instead of coming to Manitou. So I think that sign is, uh, maybe deters people from driving into Manitou. Which is not a good thing, and then the other issue I've got is evidently the city bought Chase Bank months and months ago. And Chase Bank stays coned off ever since they bought it, no one can park there. Huh?
Over, for the record, over a year.
Over a year, and then last weekend is the Wine Festival. And nobody can use that parking that's right next to the Wine Festival. So it just doesn't make any sense, it's like, it's like people don't care. It's like, gee, no, people aren't thinking, I guess. So I guess, you know, what's Juan got to say about that, because that, that one lot's been coned off forever, and. Then we got all these signs saying all the parking lots are full, but we got plenty of parking on the street.
Juan, did you have anything back or?
No, we do, we, we do get that turnover, and that turnover, we, we try to keep it between eighty-seven and ninety-two percent. You may not see, you may not see it because the turnover is pretty quick, for all, all of our lots. But when we do look at our data software, we are having that turnover, and it's, it is between that percentage.
How's the turnover at the Chase Bank Parking Lot? Why is that thing still coned off?
It's for safety reasons, uh, it, a lot of it's for safety reasons, for right now until, because we're. We've had delays with the contract, selecting a contractor. Uh, we haven't been able to allow anybody in the building or even to park inside.
Okay.
You know, one suggestion for us is to have the next. Pike Ride, Pike Ride, Pike Ride Station on that end of town. Um, there's one, so, I mean, that will be kind of a destination, I know I've driven to. Where I've driven down to the pool and parked my car to jump on a bike there. So I know that people might park, and it might add more visibility to the parking lot too, so the next time. Uh, Pike Ride wants to expand, I think we need to really consider about allowing. Shmishki to be stationed there, I think it'd be a perfect location for that. And so it's something in the future, I hope that. We consider that. Can't hurt.
Okay, anybody else for, for the parking report?
Ralph may have something there if our, if our Smishni Lot does continue to decrease. But we'll just keep an eye on it.
We will definitely pay attention. Um, I think that, I think the fact that El Paso County just is about to open. Rainbow Falls or graffiti falls, or call it however you want. That's, that's gonna create a little bit of action over on the other side of town over there, so we might. Uh, we might see more usage.
I think we will, because some of the events are starting to happen up at Soda Springs Park now, this part of the year. So it, it hasn't, it's all been in Memorial Park, but now, um, the pavilions can be used almost, you know, like two, three times a week now. There's gonna be music, plus there's even a farmer's market that's gonna be in there, so I think. I think it's gonna improve, and we need to get the word out, the word out too, like the farmer's market people saying, hey, you, you know, there is a parking lot right up there. For your vendors to use or what have you, so I think it's gonna improve. I hope.
I hope so as well. Uh, anything else for the parking report, James or Juan? Alright, thank you guys. Uh, next is finance report, Nicole, she with us? Sorry, I wasn't checking if she's here or not before.
See, can you hear me now?
Oh, now we can hear you.
Oh, good, and let's see if I can get the report up. And then maybe comparing two years ago, you won't feel so bad about the money coming in from Smishni. I am not. See my share button, there we go. So usually I just ask, do you have any questions regarding the report? And this particular one is the one for January through. May, and then it doesn't look so bad, it's a little bit. Less than last year, but through the year, through May, it's not as bad as it was the two previous years. So I don't know that we have to have a doom and gloom, we know that we're in a bit of a recession, and we've seen that through the sales taxes as well. So just a little consideration for that.
Yeah, people just don't have the same buying power at the moment.
Have to go into the grocery store.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So if you have any, I, let me know when you wanna move on, or if you wanna look at just May.
Yeah, I'm, I actually printed everything, so I have it in front of me, if anybody else wanna come and go ahead.
I printed it also, I, I really don't have any. Insights into any of it.
So my, my only other comment I would have to say is that. I didn't, I could not find the breakdown, so I put everything under principal for the payment. This is the payment for the entire amount, it got moved into, uh, plus our monthly. But I will get that separated out, so it's principal and interest. On our, well, on our next meeting, also I will be gone for the next meeting, so. Just shoot me any questions and I can get those back to you then. I'll try to get these reports out as soon as possible, okay?
Thank you. Any questions for Nicole? Anybody? Alright, awesome. Thank you so much, Nicole. I hope you're going somewhere fun. Alrights. I'll make a motion to approve both parking and finance report. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Berzati. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That was five to zero, thank you. Uh, going next, we have a presentation by EPS. Daniel or Christian, I believe, will be with us. Daniel, you're here, or Christian, go ahead.
We're, we're both here.
Yep. Bye.
Uh, Christian, are you gonna put it up, or do you want us to put it up?
I can put it up.
Yeah, why don't we do it?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, sure.
And if you guys can give us a little bit of background.
We will do that.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you, Shimi. So EPS, or Economic and Planning System. Longer version of the name of the company was hired by the city to do a special. Task Tax District feasibility study. So we've been working on this project, you know, for, for several months and have met with. Why don't you go to the next slide? We've met with a number of the other special districts in the town. The purpose of the, the project is to look at. The possibility or to look at the feasibility of another. Either a new taxing district or a revised taxing district. To provide or consolidate services in the community. So we have started with looking at kind of the roles and responsibilities. Of the Business Improvement District, the Urban renewal authority, the Parking District Metro. I guess that's all the, the existing districts we're looking at, but, but you know, kind of looking at what their existing strengths and weaknesses are, what. What the needs are, and then looking at other types of districts that. Or, or modifications of existing districts that could be made to address some of the shortcomings that are in the community. So, uh, we've, you know, we've met. Uh, a couple of times with the, with the Business Improvement District and the U R A. Um, and a number of the. And we haven't had an opportunity to meet with you until now, so that's, that's why we're here, to really get your input. Uh, on what we have found in our analysis, and then our suggestions of, of alternatives that might be on the table in terms of their. Pluses and minuses, and what, how you, uh, your perspective on them. So, and we've looked at a. I'll go back to the other one for a sec. You know, we've looked at how other peer cities have organized and provided services in their downtowns, and we kind of focused on. Colorado Springs, Golden and Littleton as, as kind of peer cities. Uh, and then we're in the process of coming up with. Uh, all perf- alternatives for analysis, and then looking at. How each of these alternatives could meet the operational needs of the. Of the city, and what kind of revenues could be raised, and how that would affect assessment rates. Um, so next. So in terms of this meeting, you, you know, I, I gave you kind of an overview of the, of the project. As I said, we've already met with the bid and the U R A, and we're meeting with you. Uh, we want, we've done some preliminary analysis and have some thoughts on the strengths and weaknesses. Of the Metro District in terms of how it meets the needs or objectives of parking in the city. We've identified potential district options. And, uh, and then in terms, and you know, like I said, we'll, we'll go through and evaluate those in terms of their pluses and minuses. And then the next steps are to do some additional revenue forecasting for the preferred alternatives. Next. So this, this is as much for our benefit as your benefit, because you probably know all of this. But the map shows the boundaries of Metro in pink overlaid with the bid properties. Um, let me kill this thing. And then what we're calling the gap areas in the community, the West Gap Area in gray up here, and then the Central Gap Area basically from. Uh, City Hall, Chamber of Commerce, all the way down to the, to the, the round of east, roundabout in the beginning of the U R A. So areas where there aren't services now, and for which. A number of the stakeholders in our steering committee have identified a need for additional services in terms of. Of maintenance, snow removal, clean and safe, and beautification. So, um, next. And this is just a little larger version of the existing Metro District boundary, as you saw in the previous slide. It's, it's slightly bigger than the bid, a little bit bigger than the bid, but more or less generally similar. Next. So. Uh, this, this one wasn't supposed to be in here, because this is from our previous presentation, but I will. Go through it anyway, the, the bid, as most of you are aware, has been around since two thousand and four. It's currently managed by the Chamber of Commerce, and it provides maintenance functions. Clean and safe functions and marketing functions for the primary commercial core businesses in the downtown. Uh, its only revenue source is a thirty cent per square foot property assessment. For commercial properties, it raises about sixty-five thousand in income a year. And offset by expenses. And what's happened over the years, in the last twenty years since it was formed, the revenues haven't gone up very much. The, the, the. The requirements or expenditures on maintenance functions, primarily street sweeping, snow removal. Taking care of the flower boxes and such have continued to go up over the years. And as a result, they've had less and less money available for marketing, beautification, and other. Uh, other functions of the district. So the. The Met- Metro, uh, your district was formed in nineteen eighty-nine, as I said, a slightly larger than the bid. You own and manage the two downtown parking lots, the Wichita and Shmishki Lots. Um, we, a- as of the date of the, our, our first phase of the report, we had twenty twenty-three budget data, there was about. Two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in revenues, two hundred and forty-two thousand in expenses. Uh, almost all of that, ninety-eight percent of the revenues is from parking. Charges, tickets. Uh, monthly charges, et cetera. Uh, you do have a very small mill levy that property owners pay of. Zero point four four mills, which raises a little less than five thousand dollars a year, relatively insignificant revenue source. And, um, in terms of providing services. Uh, the I G A, or the city provides the operations, maintenance, and enforcement services through an I G A with the district. Next. So, um, again, that's just the, an ex- expansion of the twenty twenty-three budget that we looked at. And, uh, I don't, I don't think we need to go into more detail there. Um, the, these were our observations. Kind of on district strengths and weaknesses without having talked to you, so we, we just wanna get your input on what. Uh, what we're seeing, whether we're right or wrong, or whether, whether you have additional comments that, that you wanna provide to us. Uh, we, it, through our steering committee meetings, we've, we've heard that the district metros parking lots. Uh, are located and, and priced to best serve the needs of the downtown retail businesses. Uh, as I mentioned, you have a very low tax rate, so it's not a significant. Uh, tax burden to the existing businesses. Parking revenues provide adequate support for current services. Through the city's online website. Uh, in terms of how the public sees parking in the community. You know, it's relatively seamless between the city lots and the Metro District lots in terms of. Of how, how it's presented to the public, they don't really see the difference when they get on the website in terms of seeing what's available and. And how many spaces are open and where to go. And then others, that's where we're looking for additional, whether we're right or wrong, or whether we have additional input. Uh, from you. On the weakness side, weaknesses or constraint side of the equation. I mean, as, as noted, the city's providing most of the services to the district. And then the city in and of itself has a much larger parking inventory and budget. Uh, you know, that in terms of its total amount of, of revenues and services, you know, their budget's almost four million dollars a year in parking. So I, I think I would stop here for a minute and just. Ask the Metro Board members if they have comments on what we have shown here, or whether they have additional comments that, that. We need to, uh, to note and, uh, and, and add to our, add to our analysis.
Uh, question, just when were you hired by the city?
Oh, let's see.
You've been working on it for a little while now, right?
We have been working for, on it a little while, I mean, I think we. We have been working for, on it a little while. I mean, I think we, I don't have the num- the date right in front of me, but it's, it's got a end of twenty twenty-three, uh, 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 project number for us. So, you know, I think we signed the contract in late, um, uh, twenty twenty-three and got, uh, I, I take that back. I think that's when we responded the R P. We got started in early, um, early this year. We had our first meeting with the steering committee in March. So we presented some initial analysis in March. And then, um, we, we've done a little bit of follow-up work in the last couple of months, but our, our, our city client representative, uh, Chelsea Royston and the planning department went on, on, uh, maternity leave. So we, you know, we had a little bit of a couple of months hiatus there when she was on maternity leave and I was out of the country for a little while. We had a, I, I think a second steering committee meeting. Uh, when was that, Christian? Was that in last month?
Hmm, yeah, I think we might've had a kickoff like end of twenty-three and then we had the second one maybe in March or April before your trip.
Yeah, no, we had the, we had that first be- meeting and, okay, okay, you're right, was the second in, in March. Anyway. Um, so that's about, that's about what the schedule's been. Uh, we expect to be uh, wrapping it up in the next couple of months.
And how much is the city spending on this project?
Uh, it's a pretty, pretty, um, lean budget. I think the total budget to the project's forty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Two, two questions from me.
Yes, sir.
Um, first, where are you guys from?
Uh, we're in Denver.
Denver, okay. Second, who's on the steering committee?
I
City council, a
Couple of city council people, Leslie Lewis from the, the chamber. Um, the, I think two, the two city staff people, Chelsea, and then before she left Hannah was on it. Uh, a couple of downtown business people. Uh, I, I, I think those are the people we're interacting with. I don't know if there are people who were, who are on the committee who haven't shown up or not.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question on, on the weakness. How is it a weakness that the city provides most of the services for us? How does that extrapolate into a weakness?
Um, yeah, maybe, maybe that's not worded correctly. Um, I mean, I guess the question in, in our minds is that, you know, metro is a smaller player in terms of providing parking. The city is a much larger player in terms of parking and is there, um, is there some benefits of, would there be some benefits of some kind of consolidation between the two?
Okay, that still doesn't answer the question of how is, how is that a weakness? I mean, we, we all hire people to do things for us and we've hired the city through the I G A to provide certain services. I, I
Sure.
Having a trouble understanding how that's a weakness.
Uh, I, I think, I, I think that's a good comment. I take your, I take your edit, uh, suggestion. Uh, it, it makes sense to me.
Okay. Uh, also, yeah, we're a smaller player, but only recently. Uh, we've, we've been in, in business, like you say, for thirty-five years. Uh, the city only recently acquired Hiawatha and, uh, and, and some, and uh, the Dillon Hotel, uh, and we provided a, a downtown parking, which merchants, uh, requested from the city back in the nineteen eighties. And the city, uh, for whatever reasons, did not provide that. And that's why we ended up being formed, is to provide downtown parking as, and as you can see, and from what you've already heard today, the city is more interested in outlying parking. And so we have a little bit of a difference of philosophy there. Uh, and, uh, so, uh, you know, while we're a smaller player, I see us as a critical player, regardless of our size. Because we're providing something that the city does not provide and has traditionally not been interested in providing.
Okay.
I think Larry's saying that we have the higher quality parking, except that the city has grown their budget so much because we let them take the on-street parking uh, and charge now exorbitant amounts of money for it. And it was taken under false pretenses, being that we were promised that the parking management was being done to help businesses and support businesses. And the way it's turned out over the years is that it has just been done to make money. And, uh, that it's too bad that the city didn't stick with their original promises. Um, now it's all about making money and, uh, I just, it's, it's not the way it was initially promised and the way it began. But of course they've got a huge budget. They've put another, uh, probably mile of parking under, uh, charge, uh, situation that used to be free parking. And then they take this big budget they have now and spend it foolishly on electric shuttles that nobody rides on. Uh, so you know, you can kind of say we're weak, but, uh, frankly, I agree with Larry, the I G A's is, it's in the past has been a smart way to do it. Uh, it may not always be the smart way to do it, but in the past it has been.
Okay.
Uh, but, but a short time ago, the city had like, uh, you know, uh, twenty years ago, they had no paid parking on the street. We were the, we were kind of the main deal.
So was, uh, parking on the street free at that time or what?
Used to be free.
Till very recently.
Yep.
And, um, so we are here to protect the interests of the people who raise all the money. Think about it. Our district area raises all the money for parking, even on the street. So, and that money needs to be focused in this area, whereas the city has Crystal Hills to take care of and they have all these other regions and everything. But so we are protecting our area from, since we have the impact, we have the problems, we have the congestion, we have the pollution, we have the noise and everything. So we're, we're the only entity to protect our resources from being sent somewhere else. And that's exactly what's happening. It's going farther and farther. Now it's to the Dillon and all this. Well, I think that's a great city project. I think it's, those are great ideas. Crystal Hill needs streets and everything, but they're not paying for us, so I don't want us to be paying for them. So that is why the metro district is so important for the people who actually make all the parking money and have to deal with the problems of tourism. Uh, so it, it, that money at least stays in here. Not all of it. The street parking is still being shipped out to farther and farther east. That, that, those revenue streams are not staying in the downtown area. Okay, fine, but at least we are the last bastion of it. So it's just like, I understand what this, what this is going at, saying that we're redundant somehow to the city. And we're not, just like you can look at, um, Crystal Park. Why don't you get involved in their metropolitan district too then? Take, try to take that over or something. So that is why I said that the city's ideas here, we don't agree with, it's not fair. And, uh, that's why we, we, I, I see where you're going at this. So I, I'm, I'm, I, I'm surprised that we weren't part on the steering committee, uh, when even a non governmental agency people are, we're not. And talking about it, and talking about the bid, I know Larry remembers the bid and I'm, I'm sure Mike Graham remembers the bid. We kind of helped start that. It was a Kitty Clemens deal. And, uh, to ride it, comparing us to the bid is just not even remotely the same. That is a was a business thing. So that's, that's just a ridiculous amount of money, a small amount of money to clean the streets. So, um, I just want to say, I'll, I'll shut up, but we are protecting the downtown region. And we're going to keep all our funds here. We are not going to put it in the pool of the city as, at least that's what my view is.
Well said, uh, but I guess, you know, I didn't know these steering committee meetings were going on. So how were they posted? And how were people notified? I mean, the state has laws about these meetings. Were these secret meetings?
No, they were, they were public meetings.
And these were posted and advertised?
I, I assume as much I can certainly.
I, I, I guess I missed them in the weekly city newsletter that I get every Friday. I guess I never saw that. I mean, do these meet sunshine laws?
Uh, again, I'd have to refer you back to, to, to the city. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't our responsibility to, to, to post the meetings, you know, so.
I mean, I mean, we got another, we've got a whole nother group that's kind of been run the same way more recently. That's kind of a quasi-city group that doesn't post any meetings. And I just guess this is another one.
What, what's the other one you're talking about?
Oh, it has to do with special events.
I see. Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't get invited to any of these meetings about special events. As far as, as far as I know, you know, maybe one of you, one, maybe one of the other board members knows there, do they post those? Do they, did any of you guys know about this steering committee?
Nope, that's a first, first for me. I've never heard about it. Uh, we can ask Elena, maybe Elena is, um, familiar with this or maybe not. She would be the one to ask.
So, um, so the planning commit- or the planning department manages this project. So no, I, I do not know anything about it, but I can certainly find out where they're posting their notices and I find out what the special event committee is as well.
Yeah, let us know, cause, let us know, because there's been at least three meetings with this steering committee that none of us knew about.
Okay, I'll follow up with you guys.
Thanks.
I, I, could ju- I mean, your, your comment makes sense, Mike. I just would correct you. There's only been two meetings.
Oh, okay.
Actual direct steering committee meetings, so.
Oh, okay. I'd written down one in late twenty-three and one in, second one in March. So you haven't had one since March?
That's right.
Okay, so two, I'm sorry, and two.
I mean, since that time, I guess I said I was out of the country and Chelsea was on maternity leave and Hannah left the city. There was a little bit of a lapse there. You know, we've had, we've had some direct communication with our client, but we haven't had any other public meetings since that time. And one of the things that we have been trying to do is to, is to get in contact with you and, and, uh, I mean, we, we've reached, we reached out to Shimi, uh, several months ago and have been trying to, uh, um, and he was traveling as well. We've been trying to, uh, just communicate with him and get some input for him, from him directly as the chairperson. And then, you know, at his suggestion, uh, we wanted to get on the, on the, uh, agenda for the district, uh, board meeting. So that's why we're here today.
Wow. And we're glad you, we're glad you are. Thank you for coming.
Well, and, and we're, we're, we're happy to be here and are happy to get your input because, uh, we feel like, uh, we can't, we can't address the, the larger issue of all of the, all of these downtown districts and coming up with potential consolidation or restructuring alternatives without talking to everybody involved. So. And, and again, we're just to, just to be clear, we're doing a feasibility study. Nothing's going to, nothing's going to happen beyond us giving a, a report back to the city on our recommendations before anything, um, might change in terms of the future. But they asked us, I, I, I think they asked us to come up with, to look at a number of other district taxing entities that might, that might be feasible in the community. So that's essentially what we're doing.
Right, right. So maybe they're talking about a having a, another metropolitan district farther east or something. I, so I, I don't want to have any um, conspiracy thoughts on the process here, obviously, but, um,
Yeah, I don't, I, I think, I think that, I think that's fair. Is it, is it Ralph?
Yeah, it's, it's Ralph. And, you know, in the past, I mean, so many, there's been a lot of confusion for the twenty-five years that I've been involved with the metropolitan district, the city. I guarantee the city, uh, council doesn't really understand the need for it. And a lot of people don't understand the need for something and they think it's a redundant thing. It's not. It's absolutely very important. Um, just like downtown Denver is going to have a different view than, uh, you know, East Colfax or something. And you don't, you don't mix those two together. And I know people are thinking, man, it's too so small. Well, it, it is, but it is, you cannot compare the two. It is like the region of downtown Denver, trying to, you know, being taken over by a bigger region. So that is what the importance of our district is. And, uh, we are not, we are very important for it because, um, and that's why we, we, we're afraid because people are always talking about metro. Uh, what, what's the use of it? And then we just, I just want you to say that when you're talking to the steer holder committee, there is a tremendous importance of the metropolitan district. Um, and take, being taken over by a bigger organization, just because it would be easier is, is not a good idea.
Okay. Um, we got, we got your comments on those. I, and I, I understand what you're saying.
I, I would like to make, since you brought up the bid, and I was one of the, uh, original board members of the bid when it was formed. Uh, since you brought it up and, and alluded to their small budget and, uh, the fact that it hasn't raised in the last twenty years. Uh, I would like to just interject and maybe you're not thinking in this direction, but I want to be proactive about it. I hope you're not thinking about nor recommending that that bids budget be increased by increasing the, uh, tax on the square footage. Uh, since the bid has started, the money has been used for things that I think the city ought to be providing in the first place.
Absolutely.
There would be a, there would be a great deal of opposition to increasing that bid, uh, square footage tax. Uh, an incredible amount of opposition, uh, from, from the business community because like I say, what the money is, uh, my understanding, when we first formed the bid from Kitty Clemens was that this money was going to be used primarily for advertising the downtown businesses. And as you can see from the budget, only a small portion of it.
Right.
It's used for advertising the downtown businesses. The majority of the money is used for what I think the city ought to be providing in the first place. And as Ralph alluded to, that, uh, money that is being generated by our customers downtown through parking is going out of town and not being reinvested in the downtown. And there is a, an incredible amount of merchant opposition to some of that. And part of it is, uh, the incredible price of downtown parking. Uh, my tenants, along with other tenants that I talked to, My tenants, along with other tenants that I talked to, are inflamed about not knowing exactly what the price is for parking downtown. Customers come in and say, how much does it cost to park here? Well, that depends on the time of day and the day of the week.
I, I gathered, I gathered that as much from the earlier conversation that they changed the pricing on, on, on the lots. Is that correct, Larry?
Yes, it is. And through our calculations, not recently, but last year during the summer, parking downtown for ten hours could be as high as eighty-five dollars.
What? What? Ninety-six.
Okay.
Way, way up there, way up there.
I mean, this is ludicrous. I'm sorry, Juan, but, no, I'm not sorry. This is ludicrous. I know of no, any, no other place that costs ninety-six dollars, in, in Colorado, that costs that much to park for ten hours. But it doesn't, it could in downtown Manitou.
Why, why? How can it be, how can it be that much? I don't understand. What, what's on-street parking cost there?
Okay, Juan, explain it to them how it can end up being ten dollars an hour in, in the additional hours.
Well, I can explain this pretty well. So the rate structure that we have at the place was put together based off of some well-known parking studies that were done. And this type of system is put in place to encourage term. So the, the pricing is tiered. So for the first three hours, you pay the lowest rate. And in more than that, it does increase over the next two hours. And then anything over that, it increases even further.
So you say increase, it's doubled, James? Correct me if I'm wrong?
Let me, let me pull up the rates.
That's how it used to be. So I want to be clear. So if, if you could give us an example on the seven hundred block, that would be actually amazing. Seven or nine hundred or eleven hundred, because I sent an email about it, so I'm hoping I can give an answer.
So we do have a variety of rate structures in the main portions of downtown. That is where you will find the most expensive rates. And right now, we, we do separate these rates by weekdays and weekends. Weekends it is more expensive, weekdays it is a little cheaper. So for the first three hours, downtown currently, on the weekends, you'd be looking at four bucks an hour. So if you, if you park for, for three hours, it's twelve dollars. And then if you park for longer than that, so if you, if you put in four or five hours, that then goes up to, it goes up to seven dollars an hour.
Seven dollars an hour?
Yes, for that fourth and fifth hour and then.
For the fourth and fifth, James?
Yes. And then for six plus hours, it, it goes to twelve bucks an hour. So the.
So for the last four hours, it's forty-eight dollars. Okay, I come up with seventy-four dollars for parking for ten hours.
So this is to more or less incentivize parking for less time in some of those premium parking areas, therefore freeing up those parking spaces in that one to three hour timeframe. But in addition to this, we do provide alternatives that, and incentivize other areas that are cheaper for extended periods of time. The biggest one is being the four hundred block of Manitou Avenue, which is, has been heavily underutilized. And you can park there all day for two dollars and fifty cents. So that's kind of how the system is set up, what it's designed to do. And any rate changes that we make are based off of occupancy, occupancy percentages that we are looking at over a three-month period. Now that, that we've had a full year of this system in place, we can now look at last year's data, see what our occupancy rate was, and then reduce the rate that we have in place at that same time of year by the appropriate amounts. So as far as the rate changes, I want to say if it's over ninety-five percent, we're raising it by fifty cents. I think if it's over ninety-two percent, it's a twenty-five cent raise. And then anything under, I want to say eighty, either eighty-five, eighty-seven, I can look up those exact, that exact formula. But that's how we are, are approaching our rates. And in certain parts of the year, we have generally been reducing rates. Really, the only place that we've been seeing steady increases have been on the weekends. So compared to last year, our rates downtown on the weekdays are cheaper than previous.
Okay, I just want to get it. I was reacting to the comment about it could be as high as ninety dollars an hour, which it turns out, it turns out that that's true, but.
It is true. That's only if you stay in the same spot.
Understood, understood. Like, and I would just sort of, I would just say, we're, you know, that's, that's not our responsibility. And we're not, we're not really going to solve that issue today, but it's important to understand. It's important for us to understand what's going on in terms of the, of the charges.
Yeah, that's the point I'm trying to get across to you, Daniel. You saw how confusing that rate structure was. Or, and, and, and so this is, and, and you've also heard James say, their, their purpose is to get high turnover. People end the parking place and get them back out. Our, as, as a merchant and as, as a, the metro district, our purpose is to get people to come into town and stay. And so we're at cross purposes. We may be a smaller parking inventory than what the city is. But as Ralph pointed out and, and Mike pointed out, we're a critical part to the downtown merchants.
Got it. I got your comments. And I appreciate them. So we duly noted, let's put it that way. So let's go to the last slide before we wrap up here. So just, again, these, these are very preliminary district alternatives that, that we're looking at under the study. One is to do an expanded business improvement district. So somebody's comments were, I guess, maybe it was you, Larry, I, I'm not sure, just saying that that merchants would be opposed to you, you know, an increase in the, in the assessment for the bid. That, I mean, that would certainly have to be noted as, as something that would, would have to be taken into consideration as to whether this alternative would be feasible or not. But one of the ideas of an expanded bid is to, is to basically expand the area under which the bid would operate to address some of those gap areas in the downtown that aren't covered currently. And what, what could be done is you could have the current downtown core, if you will, with a higher rate than the, the gap areas that might have a lower rate because they're getting a lower level of service. So that's kind of what we're looking at is how much money could be raised under the current assessment or under an expanded assessment and what the, what the benefits might be to, to providing services to those gap areas.
Yeah, if I could interrupt you, I, again, I would, I would reemphasize what I said before. I'd be absolutely a hundred percent opposed to raising that bid assessment. But I would be a hundred percent in favor of the city using that additional tax, that, that additional parking revenue that they get from downtown to increase the bid. Ah, revenues.
What revenues are you talking about? Parking revenues?
Yeah, the parking revenues. Right. Back into downtown.
That's not what a bid does. A bid is a self-taxing district that provides services. Now, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying. You're saying the city should be providing some of the services that the bid is providing in terms of snow removal. And I know, and that's duly noted. That's duly noted as a comment, so.
Let me, let me just interject something here is we all know things cost more than they used to cost. But on top of that, the city's kind of made things more expensive on the bid. And one of the most drastic things I've witnessed is where we used to have mostly one gentleman that was an extremely hard worker, do almost all of our snow removal with the help of a UTV or an ATV is what he had with a snowplow on it. Now we have huge crews doing this and they have multiple power tools to where he had one. But the city decided that when they shovel the sidewalk, they have to shovel the snow into the center lane of Manitou Avenue. Now, can you imagine the guys with hand shovels moving the snow that maybe like Larry said, should be removed by the city, rather than putting it in the parking space and the city come along with a front end loader and scoop it up? These guys have to shovel it another fifteen, twenty feet to the center of the street before the city can come and pick up the snow. And that adds a huge expense.
Sure.
But I, and I want to tell you though, this winter, when we had the huge snowstorm, the city crews did one heck of a great job. It just has made it much more expensive to shovel the sidewalks.
Um, so a-again, we're, we're trying to identify alternatives that we can test the pluses and minuses on and do some budgeting and revenue analysis. A second option would be a general improvement district for parking, which could potentially consolidate city and metro parking operations under a general improvement district. Boundary could be, could be expanded or shrunk, if you will, to address these functions. It would be a separate entity, but managed by the board. And it could have either a property tax or an assessment, or if parking revenues are sufficient, it wouldn't have to have an assessment of any type. The third alternative, as it affects metro, would be, I guess, what you have heard from others is, is potentially merging metro into the city parking and mobility department. That would end up dissolving the metro district and eliminating the mill levy. And the fourth alternative is maintain the current partnership IGA structure with the city. And then fifth is others that may come to the table, either from you or others.
I do, Daniel, I would want to make one comment on the mill levy. You, you pointed out early on about how our mill levy is point four-four and raises a negligible amount of money, five thousand dollars.
Right.
When we first started, and just for your own information from a background, when we first started the metro district, our mill levy was thirteen.
Thirteen mils, thirteen mils?
When we first started, the, the metro district is operated, the board members are all business people. In other words, we're taxing ourselves.
Sure.
It has been our intention to lower that mill levy down to a negligible amount. And we have done that over the years on purpose and made the parking pay for it, not the merchants.
Well, I think you've been successful in that way, for sure.
We've been highly successful and at the same time criticized.
Why? Well, who's criticized you for doing that?
For lowering taxes. Once you have a tax base, the, the, a previous city manager, I want to say Pendleton, I'm wrong, I'm not right about that, came to our meeting and criticized for taking away a tax that we already had in place.
Okay, all right, I, I get it.
One, one comment, also, our assets were paid for by our district. And then, so that's, they can't be given to the city. The city did not pay for those two parking lots. So us donating them to the city would not be fair for the people who actually paid for those. So that sounds great in theory about just saying, oh, the whole city can have these parks. Well, the city did not pay for them. The residents of Manitou did not pay for those two parking lots. I want to stress that. And, and, and you're, I'd like you to take it back to the steering committee too, to say, we can't just give them to the city. That would not be fair because the city did not pay for them. The residents around, not in the district, did not pay for those. Did not. If you're one block off, they didn't pay for it. So that's why it would be virtually impossible for us to just be absorbed into the city and give our park, unless you're going to somehow give us all a rebate back or something. Because for, for thirty years, we built those. The city managed, you did not. The residents of Manitou did not. And we've been managing very well. And just also to remember, there would be absolutely no benefit that I could think of with the city taking over it. It's not going to save any more money. We know that. It's not going to consolidate anything in a reasonable way. So I understand what you've been tasked to do. I just want to say it again. The city doesn't, didn't pay for these. It's not a, it's not a community asset. People sitting down.
I understand. I know, I, I understand. I got, I got that comment, so.
I will be quiet, yeah.
I've got a few, I've got a few.
Excuse me, let me just respond to all for, for a minute. I mean, so, and, so I certainly, and I'm not saying this is the right alternative or anything, but you, you legally can dissolve the district and, and transfer the properties. But it, I, I am noting your comment that, that they were paid for by the district, by the property owners of the district, and they would have to be compensated in some way. So, okay, go ahead.
Okay, I've got some, I've got some suggestions that I don't see on the alternative list here.
Okay.
We're, we're in this for over an hour already.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make it short, but, you know, I look at these alternatives and yes, somebody was steered in the steering committee, because I don't see any option. I see an option here where take away metro and give the property to the city, but I don't see anything about take the parking department, city parking department and give it to metro, who obviously must run a better operation because we do it with very little money and we've got the best parking in town. And then the, the other issue is, I don't see an option here to tax every property in Manitou. Residential included, the residents come and they use the downtown district. They benefit from the BID and from having parking here, but they don't contribute to it.
Well, Mike, I guess I would, I would react to that one by just saying, if you're, if you're taxing the residents of Manitou Springs, that's, that's what the city should be doing. That's a city function. that's, that's what the city should be doing. That's a city function. That's part of the city tax base. A business improvement district is, as some of you know, limited, is all, is limited to only taxing commercial properties, so.
But over twenty years ago, there was no bid and the city paid for what the bid does now. So, so you know, turn back the clock twenty years and uh, it was a city, it was a city function.
Uh, we, I mean, we did consider uh, and sort of dismissed the option of metro taking over all the parking functions. And it, it, although, and we did determine by consulting with, you know, a, a, a metro district attorney, not your attorney, but uh, an attorney specializing in metro districts said that what, that that is possible to, that is a function a metro district could do. It just seemed to us that it was sort of infeasible for metro to be managing on street, city on street parking, and that's why we didn't pursue that as an option. We did leave on the table that second one of a, of a basically a a consolidated general improvement district that, that could consolidate city and metro parking into a new district. And that's why we left that one on the table.
Any other thoughts or questions? Well, thank you for the presentation.
Shimi, Shimi, thanks, thank, thank you very much for inviting us and uh, I appreciate all the comments that have been given us those thus far. And I would certainly, um, um, you know, we'll, we'll pass on our comments to the, I mean, we'll pass on the comments about the hosting the meetings and, and membership of the steering committee to our client, have them respond back to you on that.
And when are you supposed to give the information back to the city?
I'm sorry, what?
Uh, when are you supposed to be, uh, given the information or this report, uh, by?
Um, in the next couple of months.
Okay.
I mean, we're, you know, we're, we've done most of our analysis, but we still have to, um, you know, have another steering committee, which ostensibly will be, um, posted or notified so that you know about it when it's happening and at which time we will come up with our recommendations and our uh, uh, and final recommendations and report.
Okay, if you know the date like that, uh, it would be awesome if you can let us know as well.
I'd, I'd be happy to contact you and let you know, but I'm sure the city clerk's office will let you know as well.
Well, we missed a couple. We don't want to miss the third one.
Very good. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank, thanks again.
Thank you.
To allow us to participate. We appreciate it.
Thanks for being here. Thank you.
Okay, bye bye.
Bye bye. Alright, you guys, going forward, um, all business continued discussion and possible action regarding in-person meeting. I'm okay with either or. Uh, we left it on the agenda just in case. We wanted to go back to the MAC. Uh, or Elena told me city, um, we can do it at the city hall as well if needed. I'd rather, if we are going to in-person, I'd rather be, um, at the MAC. It's up to you guys.
Uh, my question was, would we still have availability of Zoom?
I believe Elena said it will be, uh, definitely possible. Uh, but we can, we can make sure one more time with her. That she's able to do that, but I think that was her answer last time.
Yeah, they have, um, in the community boardroom upstairs, they have a large TV that we can essentially plug an H D M I cord in and just set up a laptop. So that would, that's, but that's the best that that would be.
Okay, I, I don't have a feeling one way, as long as it can be on Zoom. Uh, because I, I do have a difficulty getting there. Today I would have, I just barely got back from Nebraska right before this meeting and would not have made it to Manitou by three thirty. Today, for example. And if we could do it on Zoom, I, I'd defer to the rest of the board members as to whatever you want to do, I'm good with.
Okay, you guys, what do you guys think? Uh, Ralph, Barsari and Mike?
I'm okay either way. I can do, I'm flexible.
Yeah, it seems to be working this way.
You prefer Zoom, Ralph?
I do.
Okay, alright.
You know, and I think I'm, I think I'm probably the guilty one that wanted to get everybody together again in one room, but frankly, it really is kind of easier to do it by Zoom. Even if, you know, if somebody like, if somebody's out of town or traveling, they can still join us, so maybe it wasn't that great of an idea, but maybe we can try once or twice a year to get together or something in the future, but uh, may not have been a brilliant idea to change it.
Okay, so if I hear you right, uh, we're good keeping it good.
I'm good with Zoom and.
Just to comment, if you want to meet like once a year, maybe not in the summer since they don't have any air conditioning there.
Yeah, well.
And, and parking is at a premium.
Well, well, we'll do it. Well, we'll do it in January for Nicole and she can bring the firewood.
Alright guys, so, um, if I hear you, um, then we can just keep on with, uh, with the Zoom. I think you, it's, I think it's probably the best, uh, way. Uh, if not all of us are gonna make it over there, um, it just create more work for Elena. Uh, to be honest, then it's probably, probably easier to just keep it the way it is. So um, a question, do we need to vote on this or are we good as is?
No, uh, no votes required if we're leaving it as is.
Thanks for clarifying. Um, alright, uh, new business. Um, discussion and determination regarding employee raises. I, I added it to agenda. I was supposed to add it last month. My, my apologies for, uh, forgetting. I think we need to, uh, raise the hourly rate there. Um, we have Sally and Brian left. Uh, they're working on the weekends. They do not work many hours. Um, they've been with us uh, for a long time, uh, very loyal. And I think they deserve it. Uh, plus, um, if we're gonna raise them and we want to add more people, they'll, we would, we would be able to start them at a lower rate, you know, as a I think the minimum now is close to fifteen, but we'd be able to start them at sixteen and it won't look bad. Um, you know, when the other, um, uh, other employees, uh, that have been with us for longer, uh, are gonna get the same amount of money. So that's why I brought it to you, um, your thoughts.
Yeah, give them a raise.
And just to, just to make sure, sorry, Ralph, just to make sure Nicole, um, I, I believe they're at sixteen at the moment. Can you?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would suggest eighteen dollars an hour, but it's, it's totally up to, uh, everyone. Uh, it's just a number that I had in my head and, um, I'll hear your thoughts.
I'm in favor of a raise. I think eighteen is a good number.
Okay, thank you, Barsari.
I don't have any problem with it.
Alright.
And I'm, I'm not sure what the going rates are, but I don't have, I certainly don't have any problem with that for longer term employees.
And they're working eight hours a week.
Yeah, yep, yep. Uh, so you, it's not gonna break the bank. Uh, it's, you know, if you guys are good with that number, we can go with it. If you guys want to do, uh, higher or lower, it's up to you. I just, I just put a number out there. Ralph?
I move that we, um, raise them, your employee to eighteen dollars an hour.
Uh, give me one second, uh, just, uh, just because I didn't hear Mike, uh, just, just to hear it, just to hear what he says, and then we can maybe find whether we can go forward.
To be effective on the next payroll?
If, if that was Ralph's, uh, uh, I would second that for what Ralph said, what, what all you guys said. If somebody wants to make a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, then I'll let Ralph make the motion. I apologize for stopping you, Ralph.
I'm move that we increase our employee, uh, wage to eighteen dollars an hour.
I'd like to second that.
Second?
Yeah.
Yep. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye? Is there any opposed? That was five to zero. Thanks, everyone. Um, next is, uh, consider hiring, uh, Criterion McCafferty engineers to create, uh, the Historic Preservation Commission presentation. Actually, it's, it's a little, it's a little off here, Elena. They are creating a report that we will need to bring to the H P C. Uh, so to clarify that, it, it, they will create a report that is needed for the H P C. Um, I'm not sure if they're gonna be the one, uh, it's not necessarily that they will present it, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, no, no worries. I just wanted to be, to be, to be clear. So, um, alright, uh, I'll, I'll just give a little bit of information on this, uh. Uh, engineering firm, uh, we need a report from them. Um, and they, um, they offered, uh, if I remember good, it was sixteen hundred dollars just to, uh, that, that, that's, that was the rate. Um, Mike, was that right? I believe it was sixteen hundred dollars?
I think that sounds right, but then if they have to go to city council and present it, there's more, there's an extra fee per hourly fee for that, but they may not have to go.
Okay, I, I don't think they will, um, but, um, so, so we're basically just hiring uh, an engineering firm to give us a report. That report is gonna cost sixteen hundred dollars. Wanted to make sure you guys are good with that, and if so, uh, we can go for a vote.
Yes, I'm good with it, uh.
Okay, um, anybody want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion that we pay, uh, we hire Criterion McCafferty engineers to, uh, do what is necessary for us to have all the, uh, to have what is necessary for the Historic Preservation Commission with regard to property.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That was five to zero. Thank you. Um, alright, the next one is considering approving the change order for Mile High Environmental Services. A, a small, uh, update on that, um, they just need to, uh, basically mitigate a little bit more. They couldn't see that, uh, earlier, uh, since the property owner was still living on the property. Um, I, I've sent that change order, um, I believe it was about eleven thousand dollars. It is, uh, critical that we would, that we go with it now as opposed to later, because if they'll have to come back, it will cost us a lot more. So, um, any, any thoughts on that? Uh, after this work is gonna be done, by the way, the asbestos mitigation, uh, will be, will be, uh, will be done completely. Any thoughts?
Well, I'd like to make them, well, maybe everybody wants to say something first. Somebody have any comments? Okay.
Okay, wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd make them, who wants to make a motion?
Uh, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we approve the change order for the Mile High Environmental Services.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
That was Barsari, thank you. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That was five to zero. Thank you, guys. Um, one last item is, um, discussion and possible action regarding matching city parking rates for the Wichita and Smithney parking lot for the months of the summer only. Uh, I would, uh, you know, I would suggest um, maybe till, uh, you know, October first or so. Um, I, I just added this. Because at the moment, I think I asked, um, I sent James an email. Uh, James, you still here by any chance?
Are you saying that?
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I, I sent an email. I just wanted to know, um, what exactly are the rates for, you know, around our lots? For an example, the seven hundred block on the street and the eleven hundred block on the street. Just so we know, um, what those are, and if we want to go higher, at least we know what those rates are, at least at the moment.
Yeah, so, um, we, we do have the full breakdowns on our, on our, uh, website. Um, but right now in the seven hundred block, uh, on the weekdays, parking starts at three twenty-five an hour, um, for the first three hours. Um, weekends, it's four dollars an hour.
Okay.
What is, what is, uh, uh, in the cannon lot, what's the rate?
Uh, the cannon lot is the, the same rate. Um, we, we kind of have.
Four dollars an hour on weekends in the cannon lot?
Yes, that's correct.
Our rate here was what?
Our rate is, our rate is two dollars an hour, fifteen all day, Larry.
Yep, that's the last lot.
Need to raise it. It's too low in the Wichita lot. I think, I mean.
And just, 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 just to finish, let, James, can you tell me the eleven hundred block? Can you tell us the eleven hundred blocks?
What'd you do with that?
Uh, so that area, um, is, is also the four dollars an hour.
Okay.
On the weekend, three twenty-five on the weekdays.
You got it. Okay, so could you kind of do this real quick for me and tell me what's the total for a full day? Um, for that, for the, for the rates, uh, because it's going, uh, let's say on the weekends, it's, uh, four dollars an hour for the first one, for the second, for the third. And then it goes to seven on the fourth, seven on the fifth. And is it twelve on the six and seven?
Yes, uh, so for six plus hours, six plus consecutive hours, I should say, it's, it's twelve bucks an hour.
Uh, yeah, okay, so it will be like a total of seventy-two dollars for the day?
Um, so I think if you were to park right when it opens and goes to close, I think it's ninety-eight right now. I can double check that, um. Give me one second here.
Okay, so, sorry to, I, I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm, I'm doing it right. So the first one is four dollars, second hour, four dollars. Third one, four dollars. The fourth and the fifth are seven. And the sixth and the seven are twelve dollars an hour, or are they more?
Uh, so, yes, so six plus is just twelve bucks an hour.
Okay, got it. So there is, uh, six, seven, eight, uh. Okay, are, alright, so, so basically, um, I just brought it to you guys, um, so you can see the difference between. So you can see the difference between what the city is charging. Couple feet away, right, right outside our lots. And we are at fifteen dollars an hour, fifteen dollars a full day. At the Wichita and at Smithney. So I just brought it to you. You can see the difference and maybe think about. Do we need to raise it? And do, do we wanna? Do we want to match it for the three months that we have visitors here and it less affects? You know, our, our. Residents and. And, and some of the businesses. What, what do you, what do you guys, what do you guys think? Do, do we want to raise it or do we want to stay where we're at?
I'm not opposed to raising it, but I think raising it anywhere near what the city is raising at seventy-four dollars per ten hours. I think it's ludicrous.
I, I, I agree.
People off, and that's not our, our, our thing is to get people to come in and stay. Not to chase them off.
I, I, I agree on that.
Could I add just something for you guys?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So we do monitor occupancy for, for everything. And I do wanna just. Throw in that most people in, in both our, our parking areas downtown as well as the metro lots. We are seeing between two and three hours, most customers are staying. So if you, if you didn't want to duplicate our exact rate structure. You could just go with the flat rate that you have now. Just at the four dollars, so it, it mirrors what we start out with, and that's the rate that most people are seeing anyways. Because most people are only choosing to, to pay for two, three hours at a time.
All right, but the whole idea and the, the, all the, all the studies that were done before you put in parking meters. Said it should be cheaper in the lot than on the street. And you're suggesting we have the same price in the lot as on the street. The idea was to get people off the street and into the lot, and if it's the same price, there's no motivation.
But with this limited supply, but yeah, it won't be the same because we're gonna have the flat rate, so you can park longer. It's just that first hour. It's a compromise.
I, I think four dollars, and I'm sorry, I think four dollars an hour is too much.
Okay.
I mean, that's my opinion.
It is a lot, but let's raise it.
Yes, it is. I mean, where else do you find four dollars an hour parking? In a retail setting.
Right.
Go, go ahead, Mike.
Oh, I was just gonna say, Larry, I, we parked in Vale. Three weeks ago, and, you know, Vale's a new town, so they were able to, you know, develop. Adequate parking when they built the town. It's only been there like sixty years. But, you know, we parked. Underground, you know, so we were protected from the elements. We walked about fifty yards and we were right in the middle of, you know, expensive shopping and. Kind of expensive gourmet dining, but that all costs zero. Free parking in the summer, you know, they do charge in the winter time during ski season, but, you know, Vale's got. Free parking, so. If it's gonna cost somebody the equivalent of a motel room to park their car. They might start thinking about driving up to Vale.
Well, let's at least raise it some. I think it's, we're losing.
I think we're awful, I think we're awful cheap, but I think the city's awful expensive.
Let's find the happy middle if, if you guys want to go for it, and, and, and I suggested it because. I think we are leaving money on the table at the moment. You know, and, and the reason. I would like to have this money is because we have a project on our hand. We have a project on our hand, and that's the only reason. I'd like to do that. I'd like to have a little bit more. You know, ex, extra money in our accounts. It's gonna come, you know, it's gonna be mostly from. Tourists, so that, that was my, my thought. Is to create a little bit more revenue for the next three or four months and then go back. We can definitely go back to the two dollars or fifteen, fifteen all day. That, that was, that was why I put it on here.
I'm, I'm not opposed, Jimmy. I'm, I'm, I agree with you that we can raise the rate. I just don't, do not want to match the cities.
Okay, all right.
You know, what, what if we did, what, and you know, we can change the rate. Anytime we want, I guess. I mean, within, you know, within the month or whatever it takes to. Put it on the agenda and talk about it, but if we went to three bucks an hour. And we still stuck with, you know, maybe an all-day rate of eighteen or something.
I know, and I felt like saying, yeah, they're also reviewing U R A. We will lose money.
Too low.
Okay.
If we're gonna do this as our one chance to raise it, we gotta take the hit now. If we just slowly inch it up, we get. We get hit every time. I think. You know, we're gonna be still a dollar cheaper than the city.
So what do you, what are you suggesting, Ralph? What?
Well, James was saying four fifty, right?
For what?
Four dollars an hour was on the weekend. That was the highest.
Okay, so we could be lower, I guess. You're right. That's three dollars, three fifty. Now is our one chance to make some money, though, for the next three months. So we cannot let this opportunity go. We're gonna need that money, I think, so. Doing a stretch right now, stretch goal. Still lower than the city, still lower than the city, and still having a flat rate for the day.
Yes, that would be.
Three bucks an hour, that's a fifty percent increase. I, I don't think we need to go anymore than a fifty percent increase.
Okay, and how about a, a daily rate from fifteen?
If you had three bucks an hour, at, at ten hours, that's thirty dollars. How about three dollars an hour and twenty dollars for all day?
Twenty or twenty, twenty or twenty-five, twenty? You got, you guys want to do twenty?
I would prefer twenty-five, but I'm here. Let's, let's get a deal. Let's move forward, because we need James to move on that quickly, I think. By the weekend.
Okay, I heard Ralph. Larry, Mike, Barsari, twenty twenty-five, your preference.
How many people stay all day? Maybe a lot of them show up late in the day anyway. I don't know.
You know, I, I think like James said, the biggest, the biggest impact will be, you know. For, you know, for the hourly, because people, like he was saying, a lot of people stay in like two or three hours and that's about it. So the three dollars. Is gonna be more, more effective.
Maybe, maybe, maybe not to confuse things too much more. But maybe if we need money, which I'm not sure yet that we do, but. It seems like we can spend it pretty easily with this new project.
Exactly.
We could charge until eight PM. The city used to charge till eight PM, and then they rolled it back to six. I don't know why.
Yeah, that would cause confusion, though, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, we're already, we already have different rates.
That's true.
What, what about? Okay, on, on, on twenty bucks, if, if most people are not staying that long, okay, if a guy. Three bucks an hour and he doesn't know if he's gonna stay five or six hours, he might go for twenty dollars. Whereas he would not go for twenty-five.
And he may leave early anyway, and we already got his twenty bucks.
Yep, I like the point, three twenty-five and twenty.
Yeah, I mean.
Three dollars and twenty.
Three dollars and twenty?
Three, three an hour, twenty all day or something.
Three an hour.
Uh, okay, three an hour, no matter how many hours, twenty a day. Okay, all right. Are we kind of good on that? Anybody else has? Anything else? Everybody is okay?
Yeah, I, Michael, Barsari?
Yeah, I'm okay with.
Good with that, yeah.
Good, I, I'll make a motion that we increase the rates to. Three dollars an hour or, or twenty all day.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, that was five to zero and.
I just have one, one question, though. Is that for both parking lots?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just curious if it was both.
Yes, both, both parking lots.
The other one's gonna fill up real soon, I'm telling you. I really, they have so many events up there. Rainbow Falls, everything, it's gonna happen. Just, let's be patient.
Well, I was over there on a weekday, a, a week, week and a half ago, and there was only like one empty parking place at Smithney. So I don't know what's going on over there. If the machine's not working right or what?
Well, we can keep an eye on it.
Keep an eye on it, too.
Okay, I mean, it's a couple months in a row that it's been down, and then Wichita's up, so. That kind of is counterintuitive. Wichita is a good location, though.
Absolutely. Okay, well, thanks for entertaining that. I think we will. Need, you know. This extra money. We have a project on our hands and I think it's gonna cost a good dime. Especially after we get approved by everyone, so it's, it's just, it's, it's also time consuming. To get to that point where we can start working on it, and that's, I'd like to. Use this time of the year and not lose it, so I appreciate you guys for entertaining this. Thank you. All right, next is public comment. I don't know if anyone is here, but if they are. This is the time for them. All right, probably nobody here. Let me just make sure with Elena.
There's nobody else on.
Cool, all right, any other discussion, you guys? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for being here.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sammy.
Good seeing everyone. Take care.
You too, Barsari. Thank you.